Good evening, everybody. This is the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for September 16th, 2021. It's a couple of minutes after 7:00 PM. We are in Room 1 at the Carver Town Hall. We appreciate the recording that is going on tonight by Area 58. Thank you for doing that for us and for the rest of the people in the town of Carver. First of all, we're going to take up the issue of minutes. But before I do start to work through that agenda item and some others this evening, I'd like to direct everybody's attention to the fact that there is a sign-in sheet for contact tracing purposes, which is at the table in front of me and in front of you who are here tonight. So if you haven't signed in, we would ask that you do this so that if anybody does test positive or develop symptoms down the road, we'll be able to perform the necessary contact tracing so that we can hopefully curb the spread of this terrible disease. This is also being requested by the Town of Carver Board of Health. And by memo dated September 14th, I'll read to everybody what they had to say. Quoting, "For emphasis, the Board of Health is requiring that all board and committees have a sign-in sheet for all participants at all meetings. The compiled list is to be used for contact tracing purposes related to COVID-19. In addition, and as a strong reminder, any individual that is awaiting a COVID-19 test result must quarantine until a negative result is obtained. This includes individuals that are symptom-free." These measures are implemented by the Board of Health for the Town of Carver for the health and safety of all. Thank you, everybody, for your cooperation. It is also my pleasure this evening to introduce to everyone our new clerk, Maureen Graham, who is sitting on the end over there in the pink sweater. And we're pleased to have her. And thank you for coming on board. There has been considerable interest in some of these cases that are on our docket tonight, which we appreciate. And accordingly, for you folks here who are in the hearing room with us, and also for those of you who may be watching at home, I'd like to introduce everybody beyond just having you look at their nameplates. To my far left is Sharon Clark, who is the vice chair of this board. She is our most senior member and a crackerjack when it comes to identifying title issues. This is what she does for a living as well. And I dare say she's probably forgotten more about real estate law than I know. To my immediate left is Mark Poyer, who comes to us after a long career in education, finishing up as the director of science at a local high school. So he has a pretty good sense as to environmental issues that might come before the board and generally is a very good addition in terms of his overall life experience. To my right is Fran Mello, who is also a longtime member of this board, a business administrator for her day job, and brings that sort of acumen and analysis to this board. And we are happy to have her. Yours truly, longtime attorney in the Town of Carver. There aren't that many of us, so you may have seen my name out there. But in any event, that's a little bit about the four of us tonight. I expect a fifth one will be coming shortly. Our newest member is Frank Casey, who is one of the former chairs of the Board of Selectmen. And we are very happy to have his long experience in the Town of Carver and his knowledge of neighborhoods and issues relating to those neighborhoods coming to us. So I expect that he will be amongst us within the next hour. So that's a little bit about us. Back to my intended discussion initially about meeting minutes, because we have been without a clerk for the last two meetings, Ms. Graham will be reconstructing those based upon the recordings that were taken. So we have no minutes on which to vote tonight, but everything is up to date but for the last two meeting minutes, which we expect that we will have available for approval and then public distribution at our next meeting. Next on the agenda is a reorganization of the board, which we do annually. So I am going to ask if anybody wants to be heard with regard to reorganization and who might be prepared to sit in this middle chair. Yes, Chair.
As vice chair, I'll take over this portion of the meeting. And are there any nominations for chairman?
I would like to nominate Steve Gray.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
So for vice chair, I'll take over this part of the discussion. Do I hear any nominations for vice chair?
I would like to nominate Sharon Clark.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the two executive officers of this board are returning for yet another year, the chair and the vice chair. So congratulations to you, Ms. Clark.
Right back at you. And thank you. Thank both of you.
Okay. Now, we have some continued hearings tonight. It is an agenda of three cases. And for those of you who have seen us work through these cases before, we're pretty meticulous and we don't typically give anybody or any case short shrift. But as the administrative officer of this board, I have the authority to kind of take cases out of order if I think that's called for, and I'm going to do that tonight. So the first case that I'm going to call is actually the second case on our agenda, and that is Case 31-9-2R, the petitioner being Matthew Maroius, requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 2245(c), 5221, and 5300 and Sections following of the Carver Zoning Bylaw for a property located at 48 South Meadow Road in Carver. That's at a Cessor's map 104 lot 8-e-r. So as to construct a 30-by-50 square foot detached storage barn, the proposed barn is therefore 1,500 square feet, at least that's what was originally thought was necessary in this case. The maximum allowed is 700 square feet with an enclosed 10-foot porch on the left and 10-foot enclosed porch on the right side of the storage barn in a residential agricultural district. Is Matthew here this evening? Come right up, Matthew. You can take the chair. It's not electrified, I promise you. And I just kind of want to go over where we've been on this because you know that your plans have been changing.
Yeah.
So that description that I just read is no longer the plan that you have currently. And in fact, there were some interim plans, and you don't have those plans anymore. You've moved off of those.
One Plan C, which I, you should have a coffee.
Well, let me go back to the fact that we, as a board, conducted a site visit on July 11th of this year. And then we reconvened on this on July 27th. And at that point, I think you told us that you had changed your mind from the initial plan and that you wanted to construct a pavilion-style structure.
Yes.
It would be 20 by 30 square feet, but enclosed to the rear. Is that right? Do I have that right?
The 20 by 30 section is enclosed. So 600 square feet is enclosed, and then the roof extends.
So it'd be 20 by 30 enclosed, and that would be to the rear of the structure?
Yes.
At least that was your plan at that time.
Yep. Yeah, those should be the new plans that you have.
And I don't see any plans.
I dropped them off on Tuesday. Jill.
Let's see if they're in here. No, that's not it. I think this is all relating to a different case. And it's, can you see anything over there?
Do you have any plans in mind?
No, not for this evening. Let me see if I see anything here in the file.
Yeah, it's just like an E by 11 and a scoop of potatoes.
Is this what you're referring to?
No.
That's the old one?
Yeah. What about this? Is that the old one too?
Yeah, that's our lot.
Yeah. I'm not finding yet this. Let's see how far we can go this evening.
Do you have a copy of it with you?
I have it on my phone. I dropped them off Tuesday, and Jill said she was going to make five copies and have them.
So you dropped one off?
I dropped one off, and she was going to make copies.
And Jill was going to make copies?
Yeah.
Okay. So again, 20 by 30, that section would be enclosed?
Yes.
To the rear of the structure?
Mm-hmm.
And the rest of it would be pavilion style?
Yes.
Okay. And so where are we now with these ever-changing plans?
Well, that's where, that was the final plan.
Okay.
And you guys had said at the last meeting that it was a formality and you just wanted to take a look at the plans, which I can get my wife to print them up and drop them off. I just, I thought they were all, I dropped them off the other day.
Well, at 20 by 30, that's 600 square feet, if I remember my math.
That's the enclosed portion.
And so that would be a structure that you would be allowed by right under the bylaws?
Yep.
Yes.
And the rest, you're going to have a poured floor? Is that true, sort of like a patio?
Yes. The rest is going to be an open-air pavilion, but it will have a poured floor. It'll have a roof. The roof is going to extend from the building 50 feet forward.
Okay. I think it's incumbent on me to let you know that there is a concern that at some point in time, either through the time period that you may own the property or through a successor owner, that other walls could go up. So that we now have a larger area that's enclosed than what you want to do right now. So I want to ask you candidly, is there any plan at some point in the future, at some point in the future, to enclose the rest of this?
No. No, I mean, and the reason we're also doing this is because we don't plan on leaving. And my wife loves there. And, you know, we have a huge backyard bill, and that's why we want to do something nice out there.
Okay. And I credit your testimony. It's just a big change from what you came before us with originally.
Yes.
This, this plan for the garage that you had in mind would have been the largest that this board has ever approved.
Yes.
Almost 2,000 square feet, well bigger than your house. So now we're down to 600 square feet.
Yeah, because why it mentions the last meeting is basically when I, my wife and I talked it over, and as long as I can have some enclosed area, the rest we can, I can use to put stuff under and also still have a period that we can use from, you know, spring to fall.
Any questions or comments?
So it would be your intention simply to withdraw the petition today?
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure it was okay because when I showed, there was a new building inspector last time I came here. So he said, oh, well, you probably should go in front of the board. And I said, well, I am anyway, you know. I mean, I can show you a picture of what it's going to look like on my phone. I'm just kind of disappointed the plan's not here because I made sure to come in four days ago to drop them off. Jill's actually great. She's been an awesome help, but.
Well, why don't, why don't we do this? We can go to a vote tonight, subject to receipt of the plans in the building department, right? Because this has gone on now for a number of months.
Yeah.
Not, not because this is on us, but it really has been because of the changing nature of your plans.
Yeah, but I'm changing because.
You're changing based on feedback you've gotten from us?
Yeah, yeah.
Fair enough. So if you could.
If you and my wife, it all, you know, it's changed. This is it, though. I told you, this is the final. This doesn't pass, you know.
And Matthew, let me tell you that you're making the right decision by listening to your wife. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I'm not sure what we vote on other than to allow him to withdraw. It's not withdrawing receipt of plans. He's presenting a conforming building that I assume meets setbacks. It's 30 feet, 30 feet. I know it's.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to double-check, too. Is it still 30 feet?
It's 30 feet from each side.
It is, okay. Yeah. I know I already had all those.
No, it's unattached, so it's only 10. So I know you have plenty of them.
Well, we could allow him to withdraw subject to receipt of the plans. So we could keep the case active.
I truly don't know what that means.
Okay. We could keep the case active until such a period of time as the plans are received, bring it up at our next meeting, and then allow the motion to withdraw.
I mean, I can go around the corner while you're doing other cases and print out the plans and bring them in.
How far are you?
Right around the corner.
He's right around the corner.
Let's do it.
All right, I'll go meet the plans and then I'll drop them off.
Okay, I'm sorry these have not caught up with the file.
Yeah, I mean, that's a little disappointing because I didn't bring any because I thought they were all here.
Probably a safety function.
And I just flew over here from a cushion working, so.
I don't have anything in our files.
No, there's nothing, so.
And there's nothing in the file folder.
Yep. We'll try to take care of this tonight.
Sorry, holding up the, the.
Yes?
No, I can let my sheet with a couple of quarters of the structure on it.
Mr. Chairman has some.
I have this.
It was the old one.
This is the old one.
I'll go get them. It'd be easier to do that.
And all it is is just where you were going to put the conforming building, right?
See you soon.
I'll go get them.
Thank you.
Yes.
So we'll put this case on hold temporarily?
Put this on hold temporarily.
Okay.
And when I see him come back, we'll suspend the one that we're on and go right to him.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we can now go on to the next case tonight. And that is Case 41-6C, the petitioner being MO Lyons Realty LLC, requesting dimensional variances pursuant to Sections 2320 and 5222 of the Carver Zoning Bylaw for property located at 129 Center Street in Carver. That's at a Cessor's map 41 lot 6C. So as to construct a single-family dwelling with driveway and utilities on an existing lot in the residential agricultural district. Variances are being requested due to the need for side setback and lot size relief, which also this lot has an electrical easement and right-of-way located thereon. And I see some show and tell, which is always nice to have. Good evening, how are you?
I'm well, thanks.
Good. So this is another one of these cases that, not necessarily because we haven't been able to meet or have a quorum, but it's one of these cases that we have required additional information on and also a case that we had a site visit. So we are back now, and I would like, and I know the rest of the board members would like to hear from you, first identify yourself and then tell us whatever it is that you want to tell us this evening.
Sure, thank you. I'm Kevin Greedy from Greedy Consulting, representing the applicant, MO Lyons, for the variance request. As you had indicated, we've had a few hearings and a site walk. I actually have not attended any of them, but I've been updated and gotten feedback. But I'll just do a quick rundown of what the petition is.
Yeah, we're pretty familiar with it at this point, so a quick summary is fine.
You got it. So the lot was created in 1970, endorsed by the planning board. The lot was 30,000 square feet, and since that time, the zoning regulations have changed. It's now required to be 60,000 square feet and a number of other dimensional requirements. Since that time, the conservation regulations and many other regulations in the town have also changed, which is hamstrung or diminished the viability of the conforming nature of the lot. The lot of record is an undersized lot, and it now requires zoning relief to obtain conservation approval. We've been before the Conservation Commission with a number, we've been before them a number of times, probably an equivalent number as you, with various iterations to try to show that we conform to the State Wetlands Protection Act and also the Town of Carver Wetland Regulations.
And the zoning, which as you say, and let's set the, let's set the deck here. You need 29,000 square feet of relief on lot size. Basically, it's undersized by half of what we require in this town. And you also need side lot relief because you're too close, one side of the house is too close to the, to that perimeter boundary.
To that sideline.
Go ahead.
So that owes, that relates to the shape of the lot. The lot was endorsed by the planning board. It's an undersized lot. It's a lot of record. The wetlands resource area at the rear also owes to the shape of the lot. The Conservation Commission, the wetlands protection, the town's wetlands protection regulations are allowed to be more stringent than the state regulations. Town of Carver has a 65-foot no-disturb zone that they do not move from. So this blue line here now extends 65 feet and further diminishes the lot. So I believe that also relates to the shape of the lot. We've had various scenarios with the Conservation Commission with conforming zoning configuration. In our last scenario, we go before the commission and we conform with dimensional setbacks as it relates to the sideline and all other setbacks. We obviously still don't meet the size requirement. At the last hearing with the commission, they denied the application. So this, we've redesigned the building location to increase the setback to the 65-foot no-disturb zone. The last iteration, we were basically right at the 65, and we still received a denial. This additional 10 feet that we've moved it away from the resource area, the only way we can do that is by requesting relief to the sidelines. In fact, we can slide it over to the lot, over to the sideline, allows us to push it away from the wetlands resource area. This easement also impinges and diminishes the lot. The easement slides through diagonally, so every time we go forward, we need to go closer to the lot line. The wetlands in the rear relate to the soils. The soils in those areas are typically saturated, and in this case, they are saturated. And we would say that this lot is a unique scenario and does not affect any other lots in the town, and it would not diminish the zoning bylaws that relates to any other lots in the district. Based on those items, I believe the board can grant us a variance, and we respectfully request a variance.
Thank you for being succinct.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Kevin, this is a tough one, isn't it?
It is.
Before I relinquish the discussion to the other board members, I have this question for you. One corner of this house is only a foot off of the easement. Is that right? Is it a foot off the easement or a foot off the right-of-way?
It's a foot off the easement.
Ms. Clark? Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I do believe that this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, based on the fact that it predates zoning and it's on an endorsed 1970 plan. There is some question about a 2.14 lot line exchange that appears to have gone to the abutters, but it would take extensive title work to prove out if it has been deeded incorrectly because this was in tax title for so long. This was taken for taxes in 1982, and it was foreclosed on, I think, in 2016 or '17. Not being able to prove that out because that would cut in on the frontage, that would negate the frontage. One of the things we rely on is a site walk, and we did do a site walk, and it was not staked out. I mean, when we walked onto the property, we were under the easement. I could see the abutters shed, and we had no, you know, way to determine where the house was going to be. And we specifically asked that the house be staked out, and it was not.
I can address both of those points. I was not aware that it needed to be staked out. We do this, I've been in business for 22 years. We routinely stake out for meetings when it's requested and it's relayed to us. If we missed it, I apologize, but that is standard operating procedure for us as well.
And yet, we don't know where it is.
Well, there are site features, as you said. There's an existing shed adjacent to the building. It's approximately two feet off the lot, if you have the plans with you, and the house is essentially parallel to that shed. There's an edge of pavement here. There's wires here. There's test holes here and here. As an engineer, I'm probably having a little bit of advantage at that, but I could walk out to that site and get it pretty close by standing there. And to your first point, as far as the title search, title exam, I would agree that it'd be difficult to prove because it was in tax title. On the surveyor's end, we did a complete thorough survey of the property and the surrounding properties to determine where the lot lines were. And in my opinion, the triangle was never deeded out. It was an error from an abutting surveyor on large parcels. And we came to that conclusion based on following the record monuments and also the record deeds.
Okay.
As a surveyor, I'm not the surveyor of record, but the survey of record in a conversation when we thought this was more of a straightforward project, decided instead of making an issue of that corner, that we would just, that's the word I'm looking for. of making an issue of that corner, that we would just, what's the word I'm before? Remove it from our plan. That's why, because we did not want to have any boundary disputes. After we realized that this was going to be more of a legal issue, a legal proceeding, we looked more into it, and we believe that the lot is shaped as rectangles shown on the endorsed plan, and that nothing was ever conveyed.
I think we're past this issue.
Okay. It was brought up, so I was just...
Yeah, it's, I brought it up and said it couldn't be proven right now. So, it's not up to us to prove it.
Yeah, I'm just telling you how we looked at it from a surveyor's perspective.
You made a statement that this lot is unique. How?
It's unique because the, for a number of reasons. It predates zoning, so any lots that were created 1970 forward are different than it. It's got an easement with electric lines going through it. Nobody would build their house under electric lines, and the utility company would not allow a structure to be built within there either. I'm sure there's, you know, a few hundred, a couple of hundred lots in the Town of Carver with the easement through it. When you combine that with the undersized nature and the date of the endorsement, that would eliminate some more. The wetlands resource area is also a unique feature. Not every one of those lots has a wetlands resource area associated with it. The Town of Carver Conservation Regulations have also become more stringent, and the members of the board are more particular about maintaining that setback, 65 feet, than ever before. And, well, that's about it.
To your last point, we try not to intrude on the jurisdiction of other boards, nor will we comment on what they did or did not do based upon their own best judgment.
Oh, I agree.
I don't think that's productive, generally speaking.
Yep. I was just adding up the unique nature.
But yes, I agree that there are a number of features of this particular piece of property that are unusual and are challenging for you as a developer. Is there anything further you'd like to say?
Do you have anything else to add? I think I don't have anything else to say.
Mr. Poyer.
I'm just wondering, what about the shape, topography, or soil would allow us to grant you the relief that you're looking for, of the lot?
Sure. The lot's a lot of record. It's undersized. It's half of the area that's currently allowed, or currently required by the bylaw.
Can I stop you there, Kevin?
Sure.
And we, you know, this is a mistake that's made commonly, and maybe you just misspoke a moment ago, but it's not size that Mr. Poyer is asking about. One of the three things he's asking about is shape. We can't grant, as you know, a variance based on size.
Sure.
Okay? So, shape, soil, topography. Go ahead.
The location of the wetlands resource area and the 65-foot no disturb zone changed the shape of this, the developable area of the lot. And when you combine that with the easement and the location that the septic system need to be located, it is a unique shape.
We got an opinion about the easement, and the easement cannot be taken into consideration. It does not change the shape of the lot.
An opinion from...
From our legal counsel.
Were we privy to that?
Yes.
That we received...
It was discussed at the last meeting.
It was, okay. I have not received anything formally. I did understand that it was discussed, and that my client didn't fully understand it.
Yeah. It, this was discussed extensively, because the argument about shape was made, and I walked the representative through it at that time. I said, "Okay, where's the soil issue? Where's the shape issue? Where's the topography issue?" And there was no claim made with regard to either soil or topography that the representative at that time felt that he could hang his hat on, in terms of us being able to grant a variance under state law, Chapter 48. The argument that you folks made through the representative at that time, Kevin, was shape. And so, as Ms. Mello says, we had an extensive discussion about this, because the argument that you folks set forth was, "Well, you know, it's got this easement going through it, and it's got this right-of-way going through it, and it limits our ability to build on this piece of property." And then, the comment was made, and I forget by whom, one of you articulate and eagle-eyed people, that really, this is not a shape argument at all, because if you say that, then basically you're making a buildable area argument. The shape is the shape. The shape is nearly perfectly rectangular. That's the shape of the lot, all right? And the argument that you're making really goes to the buildable area of that lot. So, Ms. Mello is correct. Town Council weighed in on that and said, "Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the case law is also clear on this." And I was almost positive myself when I heard this argument the first time, that if it's, if your argument is based on shape, speaking just for myself, I don't see it, because that, that's a pretty regular-looking rectangle to me.
So, shape or topography or soils?
Or any combination of those. You need one. And that's why this is so hard, from a developer's standpoint, because we're limited by the application of state law here. This is not local law anymore. This is state law. This is Chapter 48, which I'm kind of sort of familiar with.
Got it right here.
As are the rest of us. So, I want to thank you for making your best efforts here. As I told you at the very beginning tonight, this is a tough one for you guys in terms of presenting a convincing argument under state law, that there's something really distinctive and unusual about shape, soil, and topography. And you folks have always kind of gone back to the shape thing, and that's, that doesn't work here. The shape is a rectangle. What you're really arguing, as I said before, is buildable area.
I did discuss soils and topography, and the fact that the wetlands resource area is inundated with groundwater and impermeable soils. And when you combine that with the topography and the setback that we need for the septic system and also a building, when you put all three together, I guess you can take away the shape, because we, the fact that that easement, it sounds like under state law is a self-inflicted issue, doesn't change the shape in the view of MGL 40. But we do have soils issues, and that has caused us problems with the Conservation Commission as well.
What is the topography issue that you alluded to?
The elevations of the site. Obviously, the wetlands are at a lower elevation, and then we need, and then Center Street is elevated. This is the only location we can cite a septic system and get groundwater and wetlands resource area setbacks.
So, we know that Center Street is elevated. We've been out there. But when we get off of Center Street and we get down to the lot area itself, isn't it pretty flat?
We don't know, because it wasn't staked out.
It goes from elevation 96 to elevation 78. So...
Ms. Mello?
A 20-foot drop.
You don't think, she says she doesn't think that's a lot.
It depends on how it drops off, how quickly it drops off, where it drops off. And again, we have no idea where your house is going.
So, if I...
And can I say one other thing?
Sure.
From my point of view, when you look at your lot, your easement is self-imposed hardship, because if your easement wasn't there, you could shift this house over.
Exactly. I was just thinking that if the easement wasn't impacting it, then it would be a conforming.
Exactly.
They could move it over 10 feet.
Yep.
And it would be conforming. But in buying a lot with an easement, that is now your own self-imposed hardship, and those aren't allowed.
Exactly.
Hmm, good point.
Is there anything else that anybody else would like to say? Kevin, last chance.
If we researched the easement, and the easement was there prior to the endorsement of the plan, would that change your mind as to how the easement affects the buildability of the lot that the 1970 Planning Board endorsed?
Ms. Clark.
Well, I know the easement, and I know it was put in in 1926. And it was there when the owner bought the lot out of tax title, and the lot was considered developable, which does not mean buildable, by our zoning bylaws. And, you know, Ms. Mello's perfectly correct, that if it weren't for the easement, this house could be put over in a totally conforming space. But it can't because of the easement, which was there predating the plan.
So, when the town sold this as a buildable lot to the buyer...
They sold it as a developable lot. And there is a distinction. Developable means you go to Planning Board, you come here. It is not buildable.
Sounds a little used-car salesman-ish, but that's okay?
I don't make the rules when it comes out of tax title.
Ms. Mello, do you have anything else? Ms. Clark.
I do not.
Mr. Poyer.
I think I have one question. At the beginning of your presentation, and now I want to make sure I heard you correctly.
Sure.
And so, if I said it different than you meant it, or whatever, maybe some clarification. You seem to indicate that the granting of the variance here would not impact any other lot within Carver. I'm just wondering how you, if that's what you said or meant, I don't know.
I did indicate that. What I was saying is that, in general, it does not affect the zoning of the district by granting this variance, which is one of the standards.
Okay. Anything further? Do I hear a motion to close it up? Before I do, Mr. Brady, do you have anything else?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grady.
Grady. Grady? Got Brady on my head, because we have another game coming up.
There you go. That never happens. Nobody ever says that.
So, I see an individual standing up, but I'm not quite ready to recognize him until I see if there are any other people that want to be recognized also. Anybody would like to speak on this? Yes?
I would, but I prefer to defer.
Okay. These two gentlemen, anyone else in the room, at least at this point? All right. Identify yourself for the record, please.
Ellen Jermaine, 24 Pine Street. Would this board be interested in anything that occurred with conservation and why this came back here? I wasn't going to speak up until the used-car salesman remarked.
Well...
So, I think there is something pertinent that should come forward.
Let me again say this for the record. We, it's not the habit of this board, as you well know, to comment...
Yes, I do.
...about the decisions that are made by other boards that are properly within their jurisdiction. So, we don't get into that intramural kind of politics or fight.
No, but it is on the record.
This is an appellate board here. However, in deference to your desire to be heard with regard to this one specific point that you want to make...
Please.
We'll hear you briefly.
The last time this came, he fought Concom. The remark that was made was, and we asked the question, much like you do, if we say no, what's your next step? And we were told his next step was court, because you had already denied this. And then, we find out after that, that you had continued it, and that was a complete mistruth. There was a misleading. We did, in fact, deny it, because he wanted to put the whole thing in the wetlands, and that was never going to work. So, that's, that's it.
And for the record, Mr. Jermaine is a...
Vice Chairman.
Vice Chairman of the Conservation Commission. Thank you for that contribution. And he's correct. We had no, I don't think we'd even opened the case at that point.
I think we'd opened it and automatically continued it.
Okay. I stand corrected. We had not taken any evidence on it. Now, I see Mr. Grady, G-R-A-D-Y, would like to speak again.
Yeah.
Please, briefly.
Yep. And I know this is going to change your mind, or Mr. Jermaine's, but...
It's our minds you have to change, not Mr. Jermaine's.
I know, but I just want to say for the record, we did not misrepresent on purpose that this board had closed the hearing. We wouldn't do that. It was public knowledge. It can be looked up. I wouldn't say that it's a closed hearing, that it's been denied when it hadn't, when it could be looked up within 30 seconds.
I don't cast any aspersions on you or your development group.
I just want to be clear that, you know, my company and myself do not misrepresent like that.
I don't believe you would either.
Thank you.
I see a gentleman in the back who raised his hand previously. If he would like to come up, identify himself?
Yes, sir.
That would be great.
Cornelia Shea, 148 Plymouth Street.
Mr. Shea, you're a sitting member of the Planning Board, are you?
Yes, but I'm not here in any relationship to that. This is just a point of clar...
So, you're testifying as an individual this evening?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
This is just a point of clarification.
Sure.
Concom, if I'm not mistaken, it's a 100-foot setback and a 65-foot no-use zone, and Concom has the ability to regulate the 35 feet between that, because I know there's been, that point's been brought up a lot tonight, and I just wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you for that clarification. And thank you for being succinct.
One final...
Mr. Grady, last comment.
One final thing. And I did advise my client to appeal and to file with the court on the conservation's determination. Unfortunately, this project does not have deep enough pockets to make it worth its while to file that appeal. So, that's why I did say that we'd probably go to court would be our next step, and I advised my client to appeal. He decided, within the 10-day appeal period, not to do it.
Thank you for that comment, and I will say, as I do periodically from the chair, that that probably was good advice, that he not appeal, because this board has not been reversed for 30 years in court, and we've had a number of appeals in the last three decades.
I was referring to conservation at DEP.
Conservation, but if there is a feeling that perhaps you might want to appeal whatever we decide to do tonight, that, I think, is the kind of track record that you would be dealing with.
I, I'm aware of the likelihood of appeal on ZVA versus likelihood of appeal at DEP and Conservation.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
You're very gracious. Appreciate it. You can withdraw. Everybody good?
Okay.
Yes?
Yeah, a little question.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, this public hearing is now closed. Would anybody like to make a motion? Please don't everybody talk at once here.
I want to be careful.
I want to be careful.
You want to phrase it in the affirmative or in the negative?
I want to- I think I'm going to phrase it in the affirmative.
Go ahead. You make a motion to grant?
I make a motion that we grant a 10-foot variance on the petition.
As well as a 29,000s?
No, we don't need that.
I beg your pardon?
We don't need that.
On the lot size?
Yeah, because it's a pre-existing non-complorant.
Okay.
Only the variance.
All right, so say it again.
I move that we grant the 10-foot variance on the petition for 129 Center Street.
Do I hear a second? No second?
The motion fails.
The motion fails. Thank you. Do I hear another motion? Any motion at all?
I move that we deny the petition for the 10-foot variance on the grounds that it does not meet Chapter 48, Section 10 for a variance.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So the request for the variance in this case fails. And again, before you leave the room, both of you, thank you for your contributions. This has been- how should I say this? This has been a challenging case from a development standpoint. I think both of you understand that. And I commend both of you for trying as hard and as creatively as you did to get this through. Thank you for your time. Good luck.
Thank you.
I'll write this one.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, is Frank Casey coming?
I thought he was. I reached him, and he may not be, so I'll have to give my little speech if we're going to sit as a- but you're going to recuse.
We're not.
Right. So let's-
I think the gentleman's back with the plants.
Oh, yes. Let's again call our first case Case 41-6C. I'm sorry. No, it's 31-9-2R. And by the way, you were identified by Ms. Mello as the gentleman next to the plants.
No.
I don't even see plants back there.
In the back with the plants.
Oh, with the plants.
Sorry to make you wrong.
You know what?
Let's just take a quick look.
Steve, this was-
Well, that's actually quite attractive.
This was in our pack.
Yeah, that's- I mean, we're doing a paper, having a frame on that, so that's another reason we're not going to be framing it in.
That's- that is actually quite attractive.
So how big will the- will the, you know, the side that's open? How much square feet that can be?
That's 50 by 30.
That's a nice, nice space.
Well, I'm trying to- the stuff that I can kind of leave outside, but under.
Sure.
And then the other half will just be kind of an outdoor area. Probably put something in there.
So do we need to take any action as a board on this this evening?
Only to accept his withdrawal.
With this proviso, again, from the chair, which is, don't be tempted to enclose any part of this other than the part that you've already told us about.
Yeah, no, we're not.
Because once you do, it becomes much bigger than the 600 square feet that you are now allowed by right.
Yeah, they say it's going to be filled up with outdoor stuff. I'm not too worried.
Thank you for being patient with us.
Are you seeing an outdoor kitchen in there?
Well, depending on the budget. But yeah, my wife, we'll see.
Again, thank you for being patient with us. Thank you for being patient with your wife. This is good, right? I have one, too.
We're happy with what we have.
Good.
Is there a- are you asking for a withdrawal without prejudice?
Yes, but I don't know what the next step would be.
Just say-
There is no next step, other than to get going.
All right, do I give this- do I give these plans back to the building commissioner?
Yes, you may. Is there a motion to accept his withdrawal without prejudice?
I'll make that.
He's so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this petition is withdrawn without prejudice. Go to the billing commissioner. Good luck.
Tell him it's all set because he wasn't sure.
Nope, you're good.
All right.
Just let him know that you're allowed to withdraw without prejudice based on these new plans.
Based on the plans.
If he has any questions, he can call me.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
So we have another case this evening, which is the case number 70-1-2R. Before I invite anybody to the microphone, let me say that it's my understanding that Ms. Mello has something to say.
Yes, we have some business dealings with Valta personal, so I am going to recuse myself from this case.
So this brings us down to a board of three. And let me address you folks as to what that means. We had expected our fourth member to arrive, and he has yet to appear, and I'm not sanguine that he is going to appear this evening. I think there must have been a mistake on his part documenting or having this on his schedule this evening. So for those of you who have come ready this evening, you have my heartfelt apologies. The other thing that I want to tell you is this, that when we do resume with a board of four, and I'll tell you when that's going to be. It's right around the corner, actually. Based on the law, the petitioner is going to have to have a unanimous decision from this board. If we had a board of five, then a supermajority would rule the day, and we could have a four-to-one decision, and that would carry the petition. But in this case, because of the recusal, the four of us are going to have to decide unanimously in favor of this petition to grant the relief that's being requested. So for this evening, on this case, I am frustrated because we had done a lot of homework. We had read through all the submissions, and I think we were ready to address this in an intelligent and hopefully articulate way. But that's not going to be possible tonight because we don't have the quorum. So for counsel?
Yes, sir.
My apologies because one of the things that has always been a burr in my bonnet as an attorney myself is having to wait around for two hours only to be told that the judge now has to go to a different case or needs to take a bathroom break and doesn't come back for an hour. Or they just don't get to me on the list for whatever reason. Doesn't seem like I ever get first or second called on a list. So again, my apologies. I thank you for your patience. I know you're ready. I appreciate that. I see that. And everybody, please rest assured that all of us have read these submissions in detail. We don't come to these cases unprepared, and like many judges, we read everything in advance. So, you know, your patience is virtual for all of you who are here tonight. So we're not going to open this public hearing. These are just remarks from the chair, and I know that my colleagues up here feel the same way. I'm responsible for getting submissions on cases over to people in advance. I do this as a matter of course. I know that, Mr. Poria, you've received all these submissions, and you spent some time with them.
Yes.
Ms. Clark as well. And you can see I have a lot of paperwork up here, too. Now, our next meeting is usually a month out from the previous meeting, but that's not the case this time around. We're back in session on the 28th. So I'd like to ask counsel as a courtesy, and I see him reaching for a phone that presumably has his schedule on it, whether he will be available on the 28th.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this board has no alternates, is that correct?
No alternates at this time.
And you don't anticipate to seat any? I mean, the reason I ask is we'd certainly prefer to have a five-member board at some point, and that may factor into our decision as in terms of how far to continue if it's a possibility.
I will redouble my efforts to try to get an alternate appointed.
We currently have no applications for two alternate seats right now.
I'm on board. I know it's to get volunteers. So there's no foresee of all?
Yeah, there's nobody in the pipeline right now, but I will continue to plug away at that for you so that hopefully you won't be put to a unanimous vote if we can help it.
Right, and, you know, with that in mind, I guess that would factor into our decision about whether we go for the 28th or what would be the alternative.
Well, I'll tell you what I'll do. As chair, I will communicate with you in advance of the 28th and let you know whether we've been able to seat an alternate or not. Is that helpful to you?
We greatly appreciate it.
As a courtesy. That way, you folks, and I understand the people in back of you are here on this as well. Not you, but the three of you and some people on the left side as well. So I'll try to let you know where we're going with that. This is a- and if you sit in a town board, you understand this is an endemic problem across the Commonwealth to get not only volunteers, but people who are good volunteers, who understand the issues. And this board is different, for those of you who don't know, because it's an appellate board that has to apply, as I said before, local law, state law, and sometimes federal law, too. And we're applying that law after decisions have already been made at the town hall level. So I will say this before I leave the issue once and for all, and I will get back to you before the 28th. It has come to my attention, and I will not take comment on this tonight. I will not. It has come to my attention that board members have been approached, and lobbying has been attempted by people who have approached or a person who has approached board members with regard to this case. We have traditionally viewed that to be improper. We don't talk about this case outside of a public setting, and only after the public hearing has been opened. This is so no one can ever say that there are quiet deals going on behind the scenes. So for anybody who might be so inclined, who is here in this room tonight or watching on TV, I strongly urge you not to approach any of us on any case that they know is coming to us or is pending before us. Whatever has to be said can be said in public hearing for the sake of, you know, being very clear and very open. We will not entertain discussions outside of the public hearing so that we can be sure that our impartiality is maintained at all stages. As I said before, this board has not been reversed for a very long time, and for as long as I'm chair, that's not going to happen. So this is not anything that I want to hear about again from anybody. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.